To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've reviewed the agenda and proceed in this presentation. Is there public comment from previous meetings? It looks like there's any. Recognition and reports, some of the administrators.
You gotta come up to the podium and talk about.
So what have we been learning about in science?
In science, we learn about photosynthesis, cellular respiration, however you say that word.
What comes into the cell?
Carbon dioxide.
Synthesis or cellular respiration?
Thank you. In photosynthesis, what comes in?
Carbon.
What comes out?
Sugar and oxygen.
Okay, what about cellular respiration? What goes in?
Sugar and oxygen.
What comes out?
Water and dioxide.
Okay, what have you been learning about in English?
In English, we've been reading.
Which book?
This book called like. This one? We read this book and it's about. Come talk to us.
You have to stand up to the class.
You have to talk about what.
Look, you're not in English.
Wait, what book have you been, what is it about?
It's about rules that like they make up, they make up like funny reasons on why that rule should be. Yeah.
What about math? Who's learning about math?
In math, um, we learned about a couple different things right now.
What are we?
We're writing, we're writing this.
We're making a video about like past topics, like the past topics.
Can you tell me the past topic you've worked on?
Combine the light terms.
Subtracting and adding integers.
Uh, what about, and what's the last topic we covered in history?
History.
Asia.
Something about Asia.
And learning other places in Asia.
Grady, what are you guys learning in science in eighth grade?
Um, like the period out table and protons, neutrons, nucleus, like that type of stuff.
Okay, uh, what book are you guys reading in English?
In English, we've, we've just worked on a little excerpt from a book called Miss Flowers. And we had a role play and we made our own quotes hang on it and we're working on that back.
Who else does want to add?
We should do more field trips.
Oh, tell them about your field trip. Go ahead.
Um, I liked reading new kids that we've never met before and learning new things. Yeah.
Where did you go?
Devil's Tower and Medicine Rocks.
So tell us something you learned about, or Devil's Tower.
In Devil's Tower, we learned about that there's like stuff on top of it and we learned about the history of it.
And when you took the Medicine Rocks, anything you guys talked about?
Like the car things and, and about why's there rocks have like indents and then from weight and rubber strings.
Grady, what did you guys learn about at the hospital yesterday?
Uh, the jobs and what everyone does.
What's a job you learned about?
Any physical purpose. And nurse, uh, like radiologist and stuff like that.
Do you have any questions for us?
What was the rest of your guys' favorite parts of the field trip?
I liked walking around Dunn's Tower.
Yeah, nice one.
Lily?
Meeting new people.
Hanging out with friends, learning like all stuff like that. Meeting with people, it's fun to get out and stuff, but it's a good time with your friends and other people to learn stuff.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Trustee report. If you're filing to become a trustee again, until March.
I saw work.
Oh, I remember. So the MTSBA training that Mr. Caffey had shared with us that's happening on Wednesday. Is anybody actually able to go to that? So I had an idea that they stream it or do Zoom on the seventeenth and it's recorded at that time. Would you guys be interested in getting together as a group to watch it after it's recorded?
Yep, I would be.
Is there a date that would work for that?
What about like our January meeting, depending on how full the agendas, I guess?
Let's come in early and watch it.
Yeah, come in early. That'd probably be the only place early. So thought, even if, how long do you think it is? Maybe it needs to be broken out into, maybe we could do like sessions of it, so.
Um, the only thing I would say about if, and we'll get to that later in the agenda, depending on when we open up conversations with teacher union, it's probably best that everybody had that beforehand.
Okay.
But I, I would also say that once we have the recording, you, you, it, it's helpful to be in a group. So you, or even in pairs that you can ask questions or think about or talk about it. But you could also watch it in your pajamas because we have, will have the recording, so you can do it either way. So we could set a date that if can't, and you still can on your own.
Do you want to figure it out?
Well, I guess it's gonna be like two to two happen that I scheduled for.
Yeah.
Like two and a half hours.
When do you guess for our negotiations to start?
Um, well, we'll, we'll offer to start that conversation in, we'll offer to them in January, so late January. So we could probably do it after the first of the year, depending on people's travel or anything that's over Christmas, so. But probably that's first, second week of, of. It could be a board meeting.
Would that being two hours and.
That'd be a long, long.
It's a super long.
I don't think that works.
No, I think it might work out better if we're able to, could we just say you have to watch it by our board meeting or by the end of January?
Just have a little discussion about.
Have a board session or something.
Yeah, and then have, maybe we should watch it before our January meeting and then we can have a discussion.
Put that on.
Thirty minutes before our regular meeting starts. It's just a thought.
Sounds good to work for me.
And is that question, is that available like on the site or will that be emailed to us?
I think you'll have to log into the site. It's usually how their recordings work.
Okay. I think, uh.
Everybody probably needs their login.
But if not, we'll figure out, right? As soon as it's done, I'll figure out if we can hijack it and put it in drive.
Okay.
Say if not, you guys all should have, and if you don't.
I don't have a login. I think I, you know, I talked about that a few months ago. It tells me like I have to, they have to send me something.
Maybe I'll have to reset it too, so yes. Maybe you'll shoot a great text or anything else in my morning.
Very much.
We can log into that live and watch it at the meeting, right?
Yes.
Well, not, I don't think they're doing it in my city, but.
Yeah, I don't think so.
The, the, one on the seventeenth if you can. On the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like somebody's gonna have a busy day that day.
Okay, any other trustee report?
Um, just remember the filings, you have to come in the office and I have them. So even if I'm not there, Drake can be your witness. You don't have to have a notary. You just have to have either me or my assistants are the ones that will be your signing when you do it, so. The three of you.
What day in March is that? It just says March.
I wanna say it's the end, but I didn't have a date.
End of March.
It's usually like the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, something like that.
Okay, so the end of March then.
And then after the twelve, they will go on the paper too to let people know that the filing, what positions are open.
Mr. Caffey, superintendent report?
All right, um, so first off, I guess we'll go right down that list. So the Chamber of Commerce, the Christmas stroll. Our part in that was a Polar Express and we gave out almost eighty, over eighty books. The rest of our books are gonna go to, package them up as a Christmas gift and send them out to the country schools. But we had lots of kids there. Dave Williams helped with that process and, and read and it was a good time. It seemed like there was a lot of people downtown and that, and so a lot of good community conversation about that. Burlington Northern Santa Fe, if, I think I've stated that, but I just wanna make sure we're gonna do a kind of a informal thank you, but a public thank you for them as well there. They provided all the funding for the books, which was, well, the books and the bells, but, um, which was about twelve, was twelve hundred dollars, so. It's pretty excited that they jumped on, on that and, uh, the chamber meets next week and we'll be on them to figure out what next year's theme will be, so we can be even further ahead of it to, um, plan and, and go from there. So that was, um, the legislative meet greet was amazingly awesome, but not to the purpose that it needed to be. Legislators are legislators and it just had lots of things popped up on their schedule and, um, an email that never got sent or whatnot, but it allowed us a chance to, those that could be there and our couple of our country school board members to really talk through, um, what the legislation is that's, that we know that's being proposed right now, so try to help everybody get as much of an understanding of that as we possibly could. Uh, the Senator Phelan and Representative Schellinger, um, had looked at this week, but they're both on different committees. So they are proposing, um, doing a Zoom with us and I will try to set up a date for that, but if it doesn't work, if, I, I, I'm going to try to lock them into a date just because I want them to see your faces. If not, but I will also be working on a letter from the, the school board and for myself. Just presenting the, the, the legislation that we know out, is out there and, and our concerns, our support and how we, then we can send that to them as, um, from our school in support of helping with the STARS Act, um, which is part of that whole, how, you know, teachers, different things as far as, um, those pieces, the cell phone stuff that's in the budget probably isn't as big of a concern to us. Um, some of their maintenance stuff is a big concern to us and so, just trying to be as unified for them, as I explained to that group, um, as we sat there and met, legislators are super busy and they don't have time to read all the bills. And so oftentimes they rely on the person that's the expert in whatever that subject matter is. The senator or representative that's really strong in education and they lean on that person. I would rather have them lean on us a little bit because we're gonna speak best for our community. Um, so that's, that's that. Uh, just as a reminder, that March tenth is that, um, legislative day that we have rooms before. You guys have that on your calendar last. Just gonna keep telling you about it until we get into, into February. The backpack program, we will get our first shipment of food on the eighteenth. And we have been moving stuff around and, uh, getting stuff organized so we can store all of that. With that being said, we also, because we're part of that, got access to a secondary grant that provides us with equipment to store it, haul it, transport it, um, all of those kind of things. And so we had to have that finalized today, so we submitted that. So by, I would like to think by the next board meeting, we'll know if we got that, but, um, just extras to help with that. With that, we, part of that grant, there, we get, put in there a, a piece for a refrigerator that would go in the cafeteria. That would simply be for, um, lack of a way to put it, excess food or overflow food that kids in the lunchroom choose not to eat and instead of throwing it away, fruits, vegetables, those kind of things can go in the refrigerator. Kids can pick that up as they, as they go by after school, um, to kind of add to that, just to try to, just to try to give our kids an option to, um, make sure we're not wasting and, and really, you know, trying to maximize any of those kinds of things that we have. Field trips, you heard the students talking about the field trips since then. We've had, we've had a couple field trips for our kids of seventh and eighth graders went to Devil's Tower. The day before, the Monday before Thanksgiving and then, uh, they met the Hewlett seventh and eighth graders down there. We picked up a student from the Alzada, from the, the country school down there, picked her up and away we went. And, uh, then after, they spent about an hour at Devil's Tower interviewing. It was kind of a fun. I will say I was, I was happy with our teachers. They did a very nice job. The kids worked on the way down there. Yeah, they messed around and did that. They also worked on the way down there. A good example, Ms. Hamel, uh, brought rocks on the bus that had taken pictures of them, so they were prepared for the rocks that they were looking for down there. So it was really, then they, we immediately partnered them up with kids from Hewlett. So they, um, had to make friends right away. Um, they could interview adults, they could interview the park people and they could interview fellow students to build their, um, that history, uh, history project they were doing with that. Then we went back to the school and ate, um, had a barbecue with their students at the school. And then the next day, they all loaded up and came up here and we went to, uh, Metis Rocks and, I don't know who learned more, our students or some of our staff, which really highlights the importance of this project. For me, because of, of some of our staff were lifelong residents and were like, I have a question. I was like, haven't you been here before? And they're like, well, yeah, I came here for playdate, but I never came here to learn anything. And so, um, a lot of kind of fun conversations immediately after that principle from down there and I were visiting about, so next year that the plan is working forward that our eighth graders will lead that, so our seventh graders will lead that. And they will be more in the organizing and sharing and then the seventh graders coming in because they won't have been there. And getting our eighth graders together with Hewlett to kind of use technology, you have to plan that. And, and, and our hope is, our plan is to go a little bit earlier, probably in October and do that, so. Uh, again, a, a pretty low cost way to talk about history and science and all those things. And kids generally, kids were amazing. Our kids were super good. I can't say enough about how they, they behaved. But, um, they, they, they had a good time and they talked pretty highly of that. Then on Monday, with early, early release Monday, um, kind of our pattern has been if we're gonna disrupt today, let's disrupt those days that are already disrupted. So they went to the hospital and they spent a couple hours going through, um, lots of different jobs at the hospital from the, with the CEO and the, and the hospital board to, um, physical therapy to, um, the x-ray technicians, blood, the front office, the emergency room, all of those kind of things, just to get them to, to start thinking about that. And it was quick, it was like twenty minute chunks moving through there. The hospital's already working on what this looks like next year to try to, try to get our kids. I mean, there was a couple aha moments, I think, for our kids and especially for me to kind of reiterate some things in the, when we were in the boardroom, they were talking about hiring tech people for the hospital and, um, how important they can't, they can't find the tech people they need. And what they really need is people that have like certain Microsoft credentials, certifications. And that's one of those things that our, our, our students could be working on. They could have some of those credentials before they ever leave this building. It's not something they have to go away, um, to do, so that's got our kids to kind of thinking about those opportunities and, and so really trying to give them the mix of, um, just similar to our safety day, there's jobs that you have to go get some training for those jobs that you might have to go to school for a couple years or tops. You have to go to school for four years, but finding the niche that fits you um, is important and then there's a lot of those niches, um, around us. There's, you don't have to, you're not only successful if you do option A. And so, uh, yeah, it was, it was good. The hospital was, was super excited and, um, looking forward to building a, a, a stronger school to work, um, atmosphere with them. So next piece of that, the next one down there, the, the IVB, the, the negotiations, um, the reason I've, I've already touched base with, um, Ms. O'Connell about that, we will need to be somewhat out in front of that. Um, we can negotiate, talk through all of the other things outside of maybe salary, um, because the governor's budget will most, most likely the way it's spelled out right now, because they wanted to have it for school next year. Once they pass it, you'll have thirty days to apply and meet the requirements, um, if you're gonna get that money. And so they very, I mean, it, it's kind of a tricky deal. They've got a lot of support for it. They could pass it in the first couple weeks of the session and then, you know, from January thirty-first to the end of February, we've gotta be, have our stuff in, and they could also pass it at the end of the, at, at the end of the session in March and, and then we have that time that we, we just wanna be, um, in that conversation with, with the staff to make sure we're, um, ready for that when it happens. Teachers resignations that we had last year, um, that we approved at the last meeting, we had four resignations, um, that were turned into me by the, the deadline and so we will be looking to, um, post those positions tomorrow, um, and start that recruiting process, um, immediately. The last thing that's not on here, but I'm just gonna share, we, there's been an ongoing conversation in the community about wrestling. And we, um, the little, little guys wrestling program was, um, negotiating, maybe that's bad, wrong choice of words. They were lobbying between two different choices, um, from where they have been practicing at the, um, at the, uh, the community hall at the Catholic church. The Catholic church, um, is, was still available to them, but, but the church would prefer, just based on a lot of things, that if they could find another home, that they could find another home. So they, um, approached the school and we came up with some pieces to this that, uh, in all fairness, I think it'll work well for the wrestling program, um, and I think it's good for kids. I mean, we are kind of the community hub. So they will be using a couple different areas, but they're gonna be using the upstairs, the big square on top of the, in the, in the fitness area. They're going to, we've got all our pieces that, for their facility use, but they, um, that way those mats can be there and then they'll have a separate group if needed, based on, once they have everybody, they know what they have signed up, they'll have either their littles or their, their older kids that they'll separate and they'll use the, the music room this year. So, uh, it, it's, it was a good conversation with them and I just wanna make sure you guys are, um, aware of that.
So how will that affect like the not really open gym with the fitness center and the hours up there and the folks that use that?
So basically they're, they're, I mean, that's why I did ask them that and they're gonna try and practice the same time that we're practicing because of convenience for kids and parents. So it should be, it should be close, um, but again, they, um, if we have one of you in the center, they can go through the elevator, just kickoff and max.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That's all I got.
Guidance. Okay, I got quite a bit tonight, so I was ready to be quick. Um, so. This last month and end of December, we've been studying kindness and compassion. Um, we, we host your next Breakfast with Estes slash our awards. I do apologize for not putting them in there on December nineteenth at eight ten. Our juniors took the ASVAB in November. The ASVAB is the Armed Service Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, ASVAB. It is a standardized test that measures a person's aptitude, strengths and potential for military services. Uh, it provides some great data, which we would be, we'll get into just interesting data later. I would like to say that we did have Mr., we did have one student that signed up for the Armed Forces, so it's pretty exciting. Um, when he gets back, we'll get some pictures and get those up. So the committee just said it gets pretty cool that he did decide to commit. Um, we wrapped up, we wrapped up our Windows, uh, MAST one window, which went extremely well. And then we are gonna be meeting as department heads to go over all this data that I've kind of collected and the data that we've got coming in. And then just discussing how to improve test course. So I'm gonna go ahead and present you some data. Did everyone see okay? Okay, um, I just wanted to put our mission on there. Develop the full potential of each student so they possess the knowledge and skill to thrive in a competitive world. Okay, we're gonna go through a couple aspects of data here, so please stop and ask if you have any questions. Now, UMass Kewars out there, please understand that we had a couple kids move in the middle and some things switched, so they do not equal a hundred percent in all areas, okay? Okay, MAST testing. So the Montana aligned to standards through year, MAST program flips the traditional assessment model by bringing the assessment process into the classroom through frequent short assessments. MAST provides timely insight into students' learning. This allows teachers to adjust the instruction in real time and students receive targeted feedback. By empowering educators and students with timely data, MAST prom- promotes continuous improvement and ensures that all students have the opportunity to succeed. So this is brand new. So we have no data to compare this to throughout the state. I talked to OPI today, so I'm just gonna be presenting to you what we have done so far. So there's nothing to compare it to the state and won't be until next June. Okay, so band one, as you see here, is going to be your bottom third. Middle is band two, top, or band three is the top one third. So this is in math. So our elementary students, we only had thirteen percent in the bottom third, thirty percent in the middle and fifty percent, fifty-seven percent in the top.
What's the, what is that like? Is the middle, where do you wanna see them?
Um.
At least?
I would, that's a great question and that's a question that came up, I guess, yesterday. I was out yesterday, but, but I would say you're gonna want us to be in the yellow or above. Okay? Obviously, we have to understand too that we have some lower level learners and we have some EPs. So we, this part is expected. Okay, we're never, you're never, it's gonna be very hard to ever get away from having somebody in the bottom one third. And, but we, I mean, they do have some accommodations and modifications for those tests, but they are, they're, they're, I mean, they're tough and testing is full of exactly. Grade seven and eight, fourteen percent are in the bottom, eighteen percent in the middle and sixty-five in the one third. Granted, you're looking at less numbers, but I think those look great. Altogether, three through, or thirteen percent in the bottom third, twenty-six in the middle and fifty-nine in the top third for math. Looking at it a little bit better, I think those numbers are pretty dangerous. Any questions on math MAST? So understand each kid took, there's four tests they took. So this is the average of those four tests they took.
How long are those?
There's only about twelve to fifteen questions. They're, they're short, they're less, we, we really did push. We did the practice test and we talked about how this is, this is meant to be less stressful for you. Let's take our time. Like, there's so many cool tools on here and I think they did very well.
If there were students that left, did you just take all their data out?
No, I, no, I did not.
You kept that average of like two or three, whatever, how many did it take?
Okay.
So, do you have a breakdown by grade?
Yes. The reason I don't present that is because it's pretty easy to look at a small class and say, so that's why I didn't present it like that. But yes, I, what's really nice about these MAST tests, that teachers have all the access to, so I presented them every piece of data they could get. So they even got every question, they took what they got wrong and what it was not. So it's really, really nice.
Yeah, 'cause, and I asked that question because when we decided to do, uh, you know, range four, five and six, like we would be interesting to see the results of that. And if there, you know, was beneficial. I know it's not the same test as they took in prior years, but that would still be interesting to know.
I think it'll be nice to see as we go across the board. Um, I, I do think that they're doing really well, broken apart like they are. That's just my personal opinion, but I see some great things coming from it. Um, but yes, it is all broken down. I don't present it that way for some of those common reasons.
Yeah.
Um, let's go ahead and look at some, oh no, I don't know what, there we go. Okay, reading. So I have found the trend is going to be, reading is going to be lower than math traditionally. Uh, elementary, we have eleven percent in the bottom, thirty-five in the middle, fifty-five in the top third for elementary, thirteen percent in the bottom, middle is eighteen, sixty-five percent for middle school, uh, twelve percent at the bottom, twenty-six for middle, sixty for top, which compared to last year's data, which Mr. Caffey and I kinda talked about this, it's kinda hard to compare it when it's a overall test versus a broken up test. So that's why we didn't present that, but it does look much better. So that is our mask window one. We have three windows, three more windows left. So I'll present this three more times. MAPS, uh, measure of academic progress, um, assesses and measures to student proficiency in math, language, usage and science. Uh, MAPS testing provides teachers with valuable data that measures students' weaknesses and strengths and assists teachers in providing instruction tailored to meet the students' needs. So we do the kindergarten through the second three times a year. And because of this mass testing and how long it's taking, we decided to do three through ten two times a year. We will test them again in the spring. So this is the call. So this is broken up into three chunks. So you have the one through twentieth percentile and this is in reading. Uh, thirteen percent is in the twenty-first, the fortieth percentile. Forty-first through sixtieth is twenty-fourth, sixty-first through eightieth is thirty-five. Eightieth or better is twenty-five percent in elementary. Uh, middle school twentieth percentile for the bottom half. Fifty-two for twenty-first through fortieth, twentieth percent for fortieth through sixty. Sixty-one through eighty is nine, zero in the eightieth and above. Uh, ninth grade, you have eighteen, eighteen, thirty-three, thirty-two and sixty. Looking at it this way. Um, I, personally, I think reading data has gotten better. I'll have more to compare to and show you next. Any questions so far? Uh, math. In the elementary, eight, twenty, thirty-two, thirteen, twenty-seven, eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, thirty-two and fourteen. So you can already see math is already higher. Zero, eleven, thirty-eight, twenty and thirty-two. So I don't know, I mean, it's comparing apples to oranges. I mean, we had more middles with our reading if we were to go back and look and, but higher tops. So. Um, ACT, I threw this in here just so you guys would kinda have an idea what we're comparing to. Um, the ACT is the American College Testing. The ACT test is curriculum-based education and career planning tool for high school students that assesses the mastery of college readiness and readiness standards. Um, I have, most of our juniors are actually signed up to go take it in Mile City so they can take a round before our ACT in, uh, we, April first. Okay, so I took the averages of all of our kids that took it last year. Nineteen is considered average in the state of Montana. So we're sitting right underneath that, nineteen for math. If you look down here, it says that level one or novice is a seventeen, level two, nearer proficiency is seventeen and twenty-two is proficient. So we're sitting right in between, so I'd say right in the middle. Uh, science is, uh, we're averaging a twenty. Um, we're right in that middle again. Uh, STEM, which stands for science, technology. E, engineering and M was for math. Um, it's also known as STEAM now, uh, but what was the A in STEAM or, or art? So, um, really, uh, thinking of that science and math intertwined with some art. We are at nineteen, which you're not gonna see that on there. It does fit somewhat into the sciences, the maths. Uh, English sixteen, so we are not in the highest range, but we are not in the lowest range either. Reading, we're sitting in a nineteen and as you can tell, that is actually proficient. So. Any questions on the data? Anything you'd rather, anything more you would want to see? We'll, we'll see comparables soon. So, K through two to actually declare a statement, just we, we'll have some stuff to compare to, see our growth. Okay, if there are any questions? Thank you. Yeah, um, I'm gonna leave this up because I need to go right into my athletic report, yes? Okay, I'm gonna give you guys this, have you take a peek see over it and then I'll explain what it is. Okay, so. Okay. Um. Okay. First of all, MHSA voted to approve, to align our divisions. They did not vote on districts. We are meeting next Tuesday to talk about districts. So I'm going to present you these two options. Granted, we are one vote. I would like to take our vote to my meeting next Tuesday. So we are now in the division that I presented to you last time, okay? It's all these teams, okay? Up on the board, it's all these teams. Now, we have two options or several options that we're looking at. So option one, we could align all three sports, volleyball, basketball and track into the same, into these three districts, okay? This is kind of what we're at right now, except for volleyball, which falls into this, okay? So that's one option. Option two, basketball and volleyball will have three districts. Track falls into two. Option three, three districts for volleyball and basketball. Oh, I thought that's on there twice. Oh, basketball into three districts, volleyball and track into two, excuse me. So basketball would be the three, this would be the two, track and volleyball. And then, uh, volleyball, basketball and track into two districts. So here's what I find beneficial with at least basketball and volleyball that I really liked that we talked about. If we were to go with option one, this top one, we would take the top three teams across the board all the time. I like that option and then we have a nine-team tournament at divisionals. It would more than likely rotate between Sydney, Glasgow and possibly Mile City, possibly Sydney. Divisionals, okay? Um, I spoke to our coaches. Glenn likes the two districts. There was positives and negatives introduced on that part. We're getting more teams to divisionals out of our district, essentially. Um, the state, the reason that we kinda did this, which Carol Trippett is on the MHSA board and presented this in our meeting the other day. The whole point of this was try to align everything so it would be straight across the board. Track, volleyball, basketball would be exactly the same. So is there any option that's sticking out to you guys?
How would we get more teams in the two districts?
In the, we don't. We, I'd take the top four if we did two districts.
Or we'd take four versus being on a three-three-two rotation.
Nope, no, no, three-three-three. Three-three-three, three-three-three. Three-three-two is gone.
Percentage wise, we did more in the three, in three-three-three.
Correct. Now, track, I discussed, track is tricky and it's so, and people really don't like it, but there's pros and cons to it and this is why I was presenting. So they take the top two teams for track right now, then they take the top ten times for the year. They did that because they, if you have two districts, it's, one is in forty mile an hour winds and one is beautiful, you're obviously going to have, just taking teams, you're not gonna have the results if you took the top ten times for the year. Um, I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards option one across the board. I guess that's my thinking. Now, track, I don't know what that'll look like yet until we meet on Tuesday. How many can you take out? Basketball was, it sounded like it was pretty consistently and volleyball three across the board. I don't know what track looked like. It's kind of a hot topic. So do you guys have any opinions, I guess, on this matter?
Well, I, I would say the three-three-three works, but in track, it's not that complicated. In track, you're not taking a team.
You do though.
Why would you take a team?
You take top two teams and they're top four times, or in top ten times.
That's, that's where, that's, that's where my question would be, that's, the team doesn't matter in the sense of, if I'm on the relay team, the four people on the relay team.
Yeah.
If I'm on, if I'm the top three and the hundredth, top three and whatever the top three is and your, the teams that go, I mean, the numbers off of each team are based on who's qualified. Why are we taking a team when they may have absolutely mediocre athletes at the very bottom of that team? And they took dead last out of ten people in the mile.
And that's the discussion that's coming up. And they, they talked about taking the top fifteen times versus, I don't know. You take your top district times versus, and then your top fifteen. I don't know, that will come up. But I guess looking at this, just moving forward, right now, like Mike Richards called me on the phone. Carol, we're worried about how many districts we have right now, not track. Okay. So I guess how many, is there any preference you guys have on this? Do you like three across the board?
Yeah.
Correct.
My, I do.
So explain, okay. You're saying option one. I'm saying option one. Align all three sports. Align all three sports, which was the purpose of MHSA doing this in the first place.
That's what I would say is option one, but I am really unfamiliar with track, so.
If you should take the track team, you just take who qualifies.
I, and that's, that's something I can come back with more information on. But, and I'm not a power knowledge source in the track department anyway. I do know what input limits means. Good job. Uh-huh, learned that this year. But, so, I mean, my vote is option one. I would guess we will probably lose and it'll probably be basketball and volleyball will be the three and track will go into two. That's working. One more leaning, but I want to make sure that you guys have an option to say if you have a strong opinion. Sounds like option one is kinda where we're leaning. Okay, I will, um, take it to option one. Okay, I'll be really quick here. Um, junior high basketball and boys' basketball wrapped up. Um, I feel like they did make quite a bit of progress. Uh, we will be getting out another round of surveys. I will try to find a better way just so we have less confusion on that. Uh, I did wanna just make sure that it was sent to parents and then players took it through their email, so. Uh, high school basketball is underway. Um, schedule, I just want you to notice this really quick. I will zoom in. I apologize, yes, there is a change. On the third of January, Friday, we are going to play Broadus here. You're supposed to be there, they have a wrestling tournament and then we will go to them on the thirty first. Okay? So I will get that out to parents and get out the new one.
So the third not four.
Third not four, yep, cuz their wrestling tournament is Saturday, Sunday. Okay, um, and then, uh, Will and Eas is back in the rotation. I emailed out twenty-seven schools. Took me a while to track it all down, but I got all twenty-seven schools, class B and C. Um, I already have people that are accepting some, some that aren't, but it is, it has been announced that it's back, uh, first week in October. Um, we have all conference in. Nasi O'Connor, uh, received second team all conference. Um, and then for football, Jace Party and, um, Clay Rost, I did learn something new. At-large means that he can play any position defensively for Clay Rost. So he got at-large. Um, and then we kicked off our basketball tournaments in Mile City. We, uh, won the first two, lost the last two, but the boys competed. I mean, they only, they lost by ten, I think is close. Uh, girls, not so much, but circle's pretty good. Uh, we go to Robby Galvina, we play Hotly Project JV and Chester Hishin.
So one of the extra benefits of the field trip order that they are also interested in coming up here to play volleyball in exchange for they're putting in, um, as we all know, it's on a different funding source. They're putting in a brand new all-weather track. And so, um, potentially kind of one of those, we'll come up there for volleyball if you come down here for track, which, other than Baker, that might be our closest avenue to go for our track, our good service. So that was good, so that was positive and outside of our standard.
Um, I guess the only last thing I have on mine is ticket taking. Thank you, I, I sure appreciate it. I'll kick it out again, um, via email and probably hit you up next month. Um, we have a lot of activities planned to boost our attendance. We sat down as a coaching staff and as an AD staff to kinda plan some of these things. Mr. Caffey's imagination is big. He wants baby races. We're gonna have some baby races. We are gonna have, we have a mid, mid reverse night against Baker. Uh, we're also gonna do an ugly sweater contest, wear your ugly Christmas sweater contest against Baker. Um, we plan on bingo, we plan, we have gymnastics, we have little kids basketball. We have ordered successfully some little basketballs donated by Mid Rivers to do this basketball throw into the bulldog's mouth. Pay them, throw it, pay for basketball and throw it in the mouth. So we got lots of fun activities planned. Mr. Caffey's definitely got the creative mind on this is not AD and I being cracky. We'll give his credit to Caffey. You guys have any questions, counseling or athletic?
So in regards to like fundraising, um, cuz we had talked a while back about the athletic department and the funds are getting kinda low in some ideas. So past fundraisers that have been done this year for the athletic department, what is your plan for those funds and then is there anything in the future?
That's a great question and it's something that I have not, I guess, do we want to, and I, I don't know if this has to be an action or if it has to be brought up again. Since we did bring up, bring in so much money with our first fundraiser with Mr. Caffey, what was the name of that company and I do forget?
Oh.
assortment of nuts.
Yeah.
There you go.
Texter neighbor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, do we want to potentially pick some games that we know are further away and maybe pay for, since we brought in such a lot of money funds, to pay for a couple of away games?
I know I've had some questions come my way. I thought this money was going for meals, which I don't recall that ever being said. I just replied that as far as I knew, it was going towards the athletic fund, so. And do we need it for, to be paying our refs and?
Well, and here's, I, I mean, I broke it down for somebody the other day that was a little hot trot about it. They said, our last three football games, I believe we were like three hundred bucks in the hole. Last three, last junior high basketball games, last three, we were about three hundred bucks. I mean, like, they add up. I don't know, I'd have to ask Drake where we're sitting at right now. I know it looks better than normal because of we've been doing these fundraisers. The soup dinner brought in over a thousand dollars, the one we did for the local basketball game. The, um, the nuts, assortment of nuts brought in quite a bit of money. I do remember off the top of your head, I, I mean, I know that we fundraised around twenty-two thousand, but that wasn't the amount we got.
Right.
I wanna say it was a lot of dollars. I'll call that out.
So I mean, we have that in there. Do we need to be very cautious? Yes. Do we have enough where we could potentially pay for a couple of meals? Like on this tournament weekend where we're gone the whole time and it's costing kids a lot? Maybe, but I don't know if that has to be an action.
I would, I would, I would argue, uh, let me change that to our sports. When we started down this path, we were working to set a baseline. So we knew what we were, kind of where we were. So we knew what we were, kind of where we were, and kind of build that so we could look at next year, going into next year, to change it midstream. I I I would say is is probably, um, whether we had a hundred thousand or ten thousand in there, um, we're gonna have some basketball games. We're gonna have a significant expense in track. Um, when they start traveling, staying in hotels, all those things. And so until we get to the end of the year and know that, okay, we finished the year with ten thousand dollars in that count, then that gives us a chance to look at next year and go, okay, we have ten thousand dollars to spend on meals because we know we're never gonna touch that. It's gonna kind of come back around. So I, I just feel like this year is is a year to kind of really
Bill.
lock that, lock that dollar amount in till we know what we're kind of working with.
And I don't think that you dare pay for meals for one sport and not another, so.
No, yes. I just, I wanted to present that just because I've been approached quite a bit. As far as going forward, all these things we list are things we're using to make more money.
Nice.
So, I mean, we have lots of plans that way. So we have options and money coming in. I mean, basketball season's rough. We know that because we have four refs typically, three to four. We have them coming from Sydney and we have them coming from Mile City. I mean, it gets expensive.
And how much on average is that for a night of games?
I mean, I can tell you it's hard.
Three hundred and fifty or three eighty per ref?
Yeah.
I mean, that's your high ref. That's your driver, and then the rest of them are a little bit lower, but it's easily over a thousand dollars every night.
We have, we have been fortunate thus far because we have gotten, I mean, we have to thank Amy Walker. She donates. I don't really know if you wanna consider myself a ref. I just stand there and kind of tweet and tell people to go in and out. But I mean, like, we don't, we have all of our junior high games are donated. That's money we don't have to spend on. Um, football, we only have them coming from Baker. That makes a huge difference. Huge difference versus when you got guys coming from Mile City and you got guys coming from Sydney. I mean, it makes, it makes a very, very big difference. Miles or Baker or basketball is one of our rougher ones, and then track, just going to state alone, bas, or hotel rooms were outrageous. Thousand, I mean, thousand plus dollars. Like this weekend, I got our room rates for a hundred and seven bucks. I thought I did pretty good there, and we are taking the bare minimum. So I mean, and that's something we need to revisit next year. Do we need to be going to that tournament? Probably not. Especially now we're more in a different district, and this time we are only getting to play one team we get to see again. That probably needs to go away, and we need to probably schedule more games here. We know that. Which, if we go with one of those, if we go with the two option, we don't have that option anymore because we will only get to one tournament, and then we will have to play everybody. So our schedule, which MHSA makes, will be changed significantly. Which is probably talking more travel, savage, whichever. So.
I must say, keep this in mind, too, with your budget is postseason. So if you have stellar teams and you go to, all the way through playoffs in state football, and you go to state basketball, boys and girls, and that's a chunk of your athletic budget that's pretty easily, I think, state track last year was three grand. Just for state track, and you gotta think, we didn't make it some of the other sports, so that wraps up in a hurry. And so having that budget there to support those athletes in postseason when they make it that far needs to be.
I think where they got the idea was, okay, kids, we can raise this money, and then next year we can talk about, like, maybe we can get some meals. I think that's where it came from. I think the kids went home and they were like, oh, they're gonna pay for our meals! Versus, we're looking for this in the, in the future. We can relook at it next year. I think that's where that's coming from. Like, why do we even have to do this? Well, we're raising money so we can feed you. It's the future, like. I think that's where that's coming from.
Okay.
So, but it is, it's, we, I know I've kind of talked to Mr. Cappy, but we probably need to release something or put something out there that talks about it, because we do, they have.
That would be good.
They're very adamant that we made this money to feed them, so.
Well, and I think it'd be beneficial, like, as you do some of those funds to, like, you know, post things, like, this is how much refs are costing because we have this fundraiser that helped pay for that. And just little things like that, even if maybe a new report, that would be beneficial in my mind. Just a thought, so keep everyone updated.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Maintenance.
House is not done yet. We can move on after that. Um, the rest of it is all left to be read. Just, uh, lots of things going on. We had to, uh, we had to bypass something on the vaporizer on the, uh, over Thanksgiving. It went shut off, and so the school was a little bit chilly, or, but he quickly noticed and got that bypassed. Otherwise, things are generally a little mild, snowblower malfunction today, but other than that, things have been going reasonably well there. Transportation, um, Bradson, you on it?
Question.
Yeah.
Wendy says we bypassed it for now. Does that mean that?
Um, because he didn't have the piece to fix it or whatnot, so.
Okay.
Because it was over Thanksgiving that he changed it. And and that that brings up a good point, because we, back to kind of some of the legislative things we've talked about. That, that's a really, that's a concrete, real example right there. Um, with how some of the the funds come from the state and what we can use it for. We could use that money to call billings or Mile City, have somebody come down and do an emergency piece on that and fix it, all that, but we have somebody in-house that can fix those things, that saves us a ton in a way. We don't have to do that, but the percentage that we can use that money to pay for his salary, they don't allow us the same freedom as we can pay a hundred percent for him to come down for billings to to fix it. We can't pay, even though, you know, Arnold's doing all that work. So those are some of the things that if, having them adjust some of those things in the funding is important, because that's, that's an absolute perfect example. Over Thanksgiving, I can only imagine what it would cost us to have, try to get some, if we could have got some. Um, and then you're dealing with all the rest of the, the fun stuff that came to break, so.
I have a question for you on maintenance. So a few meetings back, we talked about that deck.
Yes.
Did you get quotes for that?
For the back deck?
Yes.
No, we did not, because it wasn't, at this point, it wasn't required by insurance shed, and so we did not do it.
Did not do that, okay.
Because it's not required for, for, um, our liability.
So we're just gonna wait on that?
Yeah. As part of kind of looking at all the different pieces of it.
Sure. Thank you.
Transportation, you wanna talk about it?
Um. Yeah, I mean, we got our kids transported fine, um, had a bus driver meeting. I relayed some in there, some of the statistics about e-buses. I don't know if you have any questions on those, and I thought it was kind of interesting where they're at currently, because there's Montana districts that aren't running them. They're very expensive. Um.
Also, no, we can't actually have one yet.
Yeah.
Because of the plug it takes. Is that in touch with Ty?
Well, I did, I sent Ty an email asking, okay, what would this look like? And he said, he said, if you went with a level two, which is the one that charges fast, then some level of infrastructure would have to be upgraded. I don't, I wasn't clear whether that was a town infrastructure or a school infrastructure, but some level of that. And if you went with the billings style buses, you'd definitely need that type of charger.
But it doesn't drive far enough, yeah.
Right. Biggest kicker. And it seemed good to Mel.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, all these long-term, lo, long-distance trips, activity trips would take days. Have to charge three times on the state tournament or something.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, um, and then technology-wise, you've, you've received some phishing emails now. All your emails are public, thanks to OPI things. Um, and those, that level of phishing is gonna increase. I've currently got several in my spam folder now that are PayPal requests for funds. Don't know how you got all that, but, okay. And there's other increasing state actors that are hitting targets, too. You probably saw some news reports earlier of, um, some, some kind of foreign actor that was emailing threats or sending threats to some school districts in Montana.
Thank you, Allison. Also, on technology, we have Chromebooks. I think there's fours that we decided for you that don't have Chromebooks, but it was discussed about in November that maybe all of you wanted them. And so they're on the cart if you guys want to check them out after the meeting.
Thank you. Custodial?
Well, let's just focus on one line. No one has smeared feces on the wall this month. That's a win. So, uh, yeah, things are going relatively good. Uh, now that we're kind of in that maybe twenty-two game, so it makes it a little, little easier there. Um, so, yeah.
Um, we'll talk about the IRS stuff because we made the board agenda item lower, and my only thing is a big thanks to Erica. She's been subbing while Misty and I have been out, and it's been nice to have somebody, so. Makes our lives go a little easier, but I will be back after January for sure, and then Misty comes back, um, I think, the thirteenth of January. So, we're back to almost normal. Take care.
Got a good month. No foot and mouth disease and lots of kids there, so that, that's been good, but, yeah.
Right. I don't think there is any.
It's fine. Can you see it?
Yeah. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? Public comment? Public comment? We'll move on to old business, policy twenty-four ten, Mr. Cappy.
So we talked about that, um, last month, and, and really, the, the only piece of that is adopting the part on that second page that, um, in accordance with the provisions that, um, the board authorizes principals superintendent to recommend to the board early graduation. Students have completed the minimum requirements for graduation in less than eight semesters. Uh, again, um, we're not changing, we're not changing the class requirements. Um, we're just putting that as an option that if a student is working hard or if there's a life situation or whatnot, that we can have a discussion about that and present the, present the case and let it go from there. Um, as it stands right now, um, we don't, we don't allow early graduation, um, which I, I think we wanna be able to have that discussion if there's a kid in that situation.
Is there any board discussion?
I just, my thought is I don't know, um, if we wanna be changing this in the middle of the school year and maybe make it effective for next school year.
I would throw, I would throw out there that we do, um, we do have a student that is in the mix of this. And so, right, wrong, or indifferent, um, I don't, I mean, just as honest as I can be about it, I just don't know that I see this young, this, this student coming back next year. Um, and he's been working very, very hard to put himself in a spot to graduate, to get on, to continue on in life, and so, again, I mean, I, I don't know if it's, it's the best thing to change midstream on that, but we do have a student in this spot that really has been working, working hard and probably should be considered.
Can you?
Go ahead.
Oh, and I, and as I did, I mean, whether we change it now or change it, I mean, we are, we are caught in this, kind of the same conversation I've had with staff as well. We're caught in. Well, um, we, we have to draw our lines, but we also have to remember that kids can do what they want, whether we like it or not. Um, if a family chooses to exit their kid and he graduates, quote unquote, through a homeschool option or through another option, that's where they're going. Do I, I think for a lot of our kids, we're at a very, 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 very best option. Yeah. And so having that as a possibility is, is a good thing.
Can you explain this? Um, admitting an individual who's graduated from high school?
Your post-graduation ones are usually special needs.
Gotcha. Okay.
Because we can service till twenty-one. Correct, yes.
But this is only, only to nineteen. But it's not yet nineteen.
Who is not yet nineteen?
Even though no special circum, circumstances exist or waiver of age requirement in my policy.
So.
So would that be somebody that takes the early graduation and then comes back?
No, that would be a student who, um, so this is, is kind of a tricky statement here, because we can have a student graduate from high school on a non-diploma track. And they graduate, and based on their IEP, kind of that path, and I mean, they, they, they walked across the stage, they graduated, but they don't have, um, a high school diploma, like, traditional, like, what you think of it. And so that student can still receive services, um, even though after graduation. Um, and we allow them. So a good example would be you have student A who's gone through his whole school career with the class, and his class graduates. Um, and we could keep him in school for another two or three years, um, to help him or her. But we, but rightfully so, he wants to graduate, or his family, they wanna graduate with that group of kids that he's friends with. So then we allow them back.
Also know that wording is exact wording that's already in three-one-one-zero that's adopted.
Yeah.
So it just matches.
Yeah, I just couldn't quite figure out what it means.
Yeah, because it says, the board authorizes the administration to notify parents and students of this opportunity to enroll after earning a diploma. So I guess I'm confused. They didn't earn a diploma, but they did. This is required that they did earn one, but they actually didn't?
You're right. You're, you're saying it right. I mean, I know you're confusing. I mean, you're saying that it's not right, but you, you are saying it right. I mean, they're earning, um, an accommodated diploma.
I just read that completely wrong, because when I read it at work the other day, I was, you know, we're working. I was thinking of it as, like, they graduate and they come back and take, like, an AP class or something to help them with their post, their secondary or whatever.
See, and I, I read it the opposite way. I was thinking, somebody that was like half a credit shy, the board lets them sit through graduation, their diploma's not signed, they can come back for that one credit up to that certain age. That's how I read it.
That's how I read it, too?
Yeah.
So, Brittany, we already have policy thirty-one-ten.
Yep, yep.
And this paragraph is the verbiage?
The first sentence is the verbiage.
The, well, and not. Right, and then after.
But the board authorizes part is not.
It's not.
It's the first. Proceed, ma'am, that individual has graduated, but it's not yet nineteen years of age, but no special circumstance exists for age provision as policy. Let's look at this other.
Does that last sentence actually go with that?
And Mike, is then the sentence above it in thirty-one-ten says, the adult is nineteen years of age or older and is in a trustee's termination would benefit from educational programs offered by a school of the district. So it just says it a little differently.
Yeah. This one says is not yet, and that one says nineteen or older.
No.
So I have two different policies. Thank you.
Like I should have worked confusingly.
I think the verbiage in this post-graduation is wrong, in my opinion. Because it contradicts itself. Cause it contradicts itself.
Is this suggested verbiage?
It's. Yeah, from MTS, it's from MTSBA. I was gonna go figure out when they changed it, see if they had a.
Is the exact same word?
Is the night, is it over or under like?
So this, I'll just read this paragraph. It says, "The trustees may, at their discretion, assign and admit a child to a school in a district who is under five years of age or an adult who is nineteen years of age or older if there are exceptional circumstances that permit the age provision. The trustees may also admit an individual who has graduated from high school but is not yet nineteen years of age, even though no special circumstances exist for waiver of the age provision of this policy."
Yeah, but that last sentence is not in there. That's what I'm wondering if it's meant to go with this or not.
Well, you want them to count as your A and B, right?
Right. Yes.
Is that, or the, the differences?
I'm just like wondering why if somebody had a diploma, why they would be coming back. I know Caffey tried to explain that, but I'm not retaining.
Other than, other than a specialized student, I mean, we'd be the first student I'd have seen come back to take, to come back. That's a really good at something, football, I'll just, but then you still, because you'd use up your eligibility because you can't compete after that. So they're truly coming back for.
Like a sentence.
The sentence is why I read it the way I do. "The board authorized the administration to notify parents and students of this opportunity to enroll after earning a diploma." And then instead of or, I read it as for the purpose of post-secondary or career preparation.
Oh.
Which is why I was thinking it needs to be.
So instead of or.
Like AP class is your shop class or something like that. They're like, oh, I'm gonna go to trade school. So they come back after they graduate, take shop class.
Where did we get that last line item from? Where was that pulled from?
Sorry, I was reading there.
So we already have, um, the sentence after policy thirty one ten. Where was that pulled?
All comes from MTSBA.
Together.
I pulled it straight off of their model policy. That's what I was trying to find.
Everybody has typo.
Their legislative.
Yeah, earning a diploma or purpose or career. I wonder if it's supposed to be for, like stuff in this thing. It might be worth asking.
Or purposes.
I want to call for public comment in case Celeste has an opinion on it.
I'm sorry.
Do you have an opinion on what it's trying to say?
No.
Okay. I just thought I'd check before we all, and you're just sitting there waiting, so.
So if you graduate early, like if you're seventeen and you graduate, can you come back and then can you still play until you're nineteen? Another, can you play another year of sports?
No, cause you can only play a certain amount of years. I think you can only play five years.
Or if you came from another school, so you didn't play like your first year, you can still play five years. So you could come back if you graduated seventeen, play another year of sports?
Potentially.
Is that what this is for? It's not for that?
Not, it's, I mean.
It's not for that.
No. That second piece is truly for, I mean, I, I get where you're saying that, but I, I've, I've never, never seen a student come back other than tied to specialty.
Well, but that's in that other policy that says that you can come back till you're twenty one, whatever, after nineteen. This is before nineteen, after graduating. So that's why I think of it the way that I do.
Well, changing it to earning a diploma for purposes makes sense. Instead of reading it or makes sense if it was for purposes post-secondary.
I think what Steph and I say is right. So I was trying to go back and find it. This was a legislative update that never got updated. And what they said, this was from twenty twenty one, says, "Any district may establish a specialty academy within a school or through an additional outside program or school. Specialty academics can focus on a variety of fields, including but not limited to health, science, trades, engineering, performing arts, finance, hospitality, and tourism, or informational technology." That was MTSBA's blurb that went with it when the legislative update should have happened three years ago.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I hear that's right now.
Does not make sense to me.
So, but yes, this is exact wording from.
So they probably have a typo.
Yep.
Well, just for purposes post-secondary, it's not really, uh, making any sense.
Public comment? Public comment? Is there any board discussion or emotion?
Uh, I'm kind of with Mr. Caffey on the early graduation thing. I do think that we should probably allow that in policy back in the school. Um, I don't, I don't have an issue with starting it this year because most students that are getting ready for it have been planning or want to. Probably have had discussions with Mr. Caffey about it. But then in the next year, people know it's in policy and they'll be ready and they can start even next semester to be, add some classes, so.
I agree.
I don't think there are a whole lot of students that are even trying to graduate early, but you know.
And you're saying to go ahead and let it be this year?
I'm saying.
Just soon as we pass.
Yeah, if we have a student that's at that point, then.
I just don't know if we can a hundred percent vote on it without correcting the post-graduation.
Could you, if all that is wanted is early graduation, you could just have that piece and make a motion for that, I think. I guess that's a question.
And then table the.
And then table the post-graduation or just leave that out?
I think.
I think you could leave it.
I think it's at your discretion, whoever makes the motion would. I think I could go, Mike.
I, yeah, I think we can just leave out post-graduation. Just do early graduation.
Yep, you have, because other policy in here already.
Wouldn't it be no different if a policy is presented and we work on handbooks and we take certain pieces we like and leave the other ones out, is how I view it.
Exactly. Hey, I will make a motion to adopt the policy twenty four ten, early graduation, and leave out the post-graduation part effective this year.
I second that.
Mike made a motion to approve policy twenty four ten P with adding early graduation and leaving out post-graduation.
Effective this year, yeah.
Effective this year. PB seconded it. Um, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any other board discussion? Mike's made the motion to approve changes to policy twenty four ten P approving the early graduation part, leaving out post-secondary or post-graduation effective this year. PB seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. New business, design build.
Um, we put out the ad and, um, on the twenty first of three, we, um, expected to get multiple bids, no. Just knowing the beauty of schools and, and that, we figured we'd get one bid for sure and, and we did. And that's the bid that we have behind that all. Um, the proposal to do the work to lay out, um, exactly what is needed for the roof and ventilation system that we approved. Um, and with that, then we will be able to build the bond that we take forward. Um, so the money approved to create this process, we did last meeting. Um, McKinstry was the only one that came back. And, um, so our recommendation, um, is to, to get that, um, for us, joking aside, I want to know where every box of screws is going so that we can paint that, um, picture and present that to the community and make sure there is absolutely no confusion about that. And this will allow us to have the details we need to make sure we, we know what this is gonna cost us before we take it out.
And I wrote your recommendation very specific because it has to include two of the three things from the law. So it has to have, um, significant cost savings, technical complexities, and timeliness. You have to have two, at least two of the three things in your project to get through design build, which we fall under all three. But just so you guys know why it's written like that.
Are these just what's in our packets?
Those are what's in your packet. That's what he sent. And I also have that digital PDF. He sent me a zip drive as well, so. I thought it was laid out well. At least the timeline fits with our bond and they're aware of that. So that's nice to be able to have a price back. So you guys can make an informed decision before we do elections. I think that's in March when we do our final or end of February, I think maybe is when bonds are, bonds are a little earlier. I'll double check that. I know you guys, it's a good timeline for January, but.
Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Public comment? Is there any other board discussion or emotion?
This is the only bid we got back on it, correct?
Right.
I'll move to approve the mechanical evaluation by McKinstry for the high school roof project.
I'll stick with him.
Does it? I'm gonna take the whole.
Yeah. You, you need to do the, okay.
Cost savings and technical complexities.
I'll move to approve McKinstry as the district's design build partner for the high school roof project due to schedule ramifications, significant cost savings, and technical complexities of the project.
Lost the second.
I read the wrong line, sorry.
Alright. Mike moved to approve the McKinstry, McKinstry as the district's design build partner for the high school roof project due to schedule ramifications, significant cost savings, and technical complexities of the project. Dave seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Mike has moved to approve McKinstry as the district's design part, build partner for the high school roof project due to schedule ramifications, significant cost savings, and technical complexities of the project. Dave seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign? Motion passes. MTAO grant.
Alright, so, um, the MTAO grant is, let me just make sure we got this, Montana Advanced Opportunities Grant, just so you know what that stands for. Um, what that allows us to do is, um, it, it targets, um, so we're targeting community partnerships and creating materials as well as our CT courses and facilitating community involvement with that. That dollar amount was roughly eight thousand dollars, um, for us. And so part of that process is that, uh, comes back to you guys to approve it, uh, so we can submit it. Um, we, all that information in there, we included in, and feedback from students, um, as well as, uh, just that, the G and I, because it's part of our elementary, as well as part of our high school. And some comments from our school to work students as well. Essentially, it's a technicality so we can get it submitted, um, finalized to, to the state. This money we've already received.
It's just a odd timeline. They require you to submit it between December tenth and January thirteenth. Your board has to approve it. See, if you haven't spent all your funds yet, it's, it's, yeah, it's, makes no sense to me, but.
So then, do I have to sign that with you?
Yep.
Is it in that stuff?
Nope.
On anyone? What else are you thinking of using it for?
Pretty much what's in there, just what's in there.
We're just gonna continue to build on it. Oh, I did have, on section two. High school. Do you mean twenty twenty five?
Yep. You don't want to do it in two years? This is my little plan. Yes, thank you.
I'm trying to think about the job for.
Yeah.
This is coming March twenty five.
Yep.
It's fun to hear what the kids like or don't, or what stuck out to them.
Say that again.
It's fun to see what stuck out to the kids.
Yeah.
Is there any public comment? Public comment? Is there any board discussion or motion?
I moved to approve both Iguacan Elementary District fifteen and Carter County High School annual report as presented. I second that.
Sam has moved to approve both Iguacan Elementary and High School annual reports as presented. PB has seconded that. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Sam has moved to approve Iguacan Elementary District fifteen and Carter County High School annual reports as presented. PB has seconded the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? IRS.
So you have lots of information in front of you, um, an ongoing conversation about, um, this dollar amount and the appeal process. And so the last meeting, um, the actual two meetings, our appeal was denied. And so, um, we reached out to, um, the school boards association and they said, well, you're gonna have to file, you know, get a, a retainer with us. Um, this is a little bit more intensive than we're, we're used to doing. Um, so we reached out and just got, um, a general opinion from Felton Martin. We actually sent a request out to both attorneys, um, and that was the one we got, we got back. And then we had a phone call with them as far as laying out what this could look like. Um, our biggest concern was, first and foremost, um, win or lose, we're gonna be assessed fees until it's paid. It's kind of the beauty of dealing with the government. So if we win, they don't, they don't reimburse us like, oh, yeah, we, we overcharged you kind of deal. Okay, you, you owe us late payment fee. And so every month that goes by, basically, that we're fighting this, that late payment fee, we're still, um, forced to pay, if you will, um, win or lose. So the attorneys advised us that our very best option is to pay it. And then we decide if we're going to, um, fight it. The attorneys, um, came back and also said that, um, through the process, that, that, um, there are some options there with the appeal, that they feel that there's a very strong case with that. Um, and they estimated, um, turn to that second page there, forty to fifty hours. turn to that second page there, forty to fifty hours. It'll probably be three to six months. And you're looking at probably ten thousand dollars to fight it with the opportunity to win thirty. To be plus thirty.
Yeah.
Because if you take the forty, it's minus ten. So we are at that point where we got to pay it. So that's, that's step A. We know we have to pay it. In my opinion, at that point, that's a pretty significant return on our investment to try to fight it. And again, there's no guarantees and I don't want to speak for the lawyers or any of that, but I think it's worth investing to try to, because we have, we learned through this process, as Brittany's talked about up to this point. In a way, we didn't do anything wrong. Other than, I mean, the simplest example is, other than we didn't send things certified mail. I mean, we have the checks going through. So the payments were made. But, but they don't, they don't claim they have them. And so it's, it's very frustrating. So lesson learned, nothing leaves our office without it being certified. But to eat forty thousand dollars on this thing or more seems worth, worth the fight. Anything I didn't hit?
No. And so the total, it's actually a little more than the forty-one. But that's just the big one. So the total is not the fifty-five, six-eleven, because we've already paid the twenty-five, seventy-one, twenty. So that one, I meant to take out a period and make that note. We, we did owe, we were late and I can prove that we were late on that one. And so that is.
On which one?
On this, it's a two thousand five hundred seventy-one, twenty. So that was for June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. That one has already been paid. So we end up owing fifty-five thousand minus that. The one I talked to Martin about is this forty-one thousand. I said it's, I can look at the other ones all day and to me I can justify it, but the forty-one thousand is the most frustrating to me because I see where it cleared the bank. And it's not forty-one thousand. It was, I remember the checklist, because this is with all the Ps in it. But I actually show where it cleared the same month that it got cut. And they're saying they don't have it. That's the most frustrating one to me is, that's, that's a big chunk of money that I show that we paid. And so that's where he said he would pull the payroll reports, make sure we paid everything accurately, all the timelines. That's what he goes in and does for us. And so my hope would be that he'd have a lot better luck dealing with them than I would because it was hard for me to get any answers every time you talked to him. It was, so send it in and then you wait and then you send something else and then you wait. So I've used that with them before and I'm pretty confident based in what he had to deal with them and they had one better case. It wasn't a payroll case, but.
And who were you talking to?
This, his name is Martin Smith with Felt Martin. I talked, I called Jeff Willen first and he sent me to Martin because Martin's the one that had dealt with IRS issue before Jeff hadn't. So.
So since nineteen, have we been notified numerous times from the IRS? And we have all these outstanding debts?
I don't know until I took over. So last fall, when I got all those in, I called right away. And because we were over twenty-five thousand dollars, they assign you a fiscal revenue officer and then you just sit and wait for them to make the first contact. And we did clear up quite a few of them. I mean, at one point, this was over two hundred thousand.
Right.
So the process did clear a big portion of them. This is just what's left that they can't figure out how to clear. Or didn't go through the appeal process properly. So. So it is better than what I, what we anticipated last year. We were doing all good, but still frustrating.
So like these letters that were dated. Or maybe they're not. I guess it's just this. Never mind. I was looking at
I would say the most.
The date that it was talking about. I wasn't, I wasn't looking at the date that you got it. So it is recent.
And the worst part is I finally had to call her. So I called her on the thirtieth, this Lisa. And she said, oh, I certified mailed you that some of the seventeen, you should have it. I said, well, I've never received, I still says they have never received this by mail. If I went to call her and ask for this fact, I would have no idea where we stand. It's, it's constant. She tells me all the time they certify stuff mail and I don't ever get it.
You should be able to request that until the attorney comes out and say, okay, I want to see the brief.
Yeah, that you actually, yeah.
Who's the true time for?
So.
I have a question. So we have to pay this regardless. So we have to pay it right now. And that's kind of what the attorneys have told us.
Yes.
Can we pay it, file that form? If they reject the form, then we can hire them to fight it? Would it be worth trying before spending almost ten thousand dollars on them? I know it would delay it because we're, you know, they said it would take them three or more months and I get that, but that might save us ten thousand dollars if the IRS agrees with that form.
I just don't know what that form looks like as far as me being able to do it myself, I guess. Because I didn't even know it existed until Martin told me. Which again is fun when they only give you all the, all the details.
Sure. They just filled out one of those forms and it's just a page and then.
You send it off. You don't have to send anything with it?
Yes. Then you spend all your documentation with it.
Yeah. So here, that's the hardest part.
So that's what you're going to have.
Is I must pull, yeah.
We have to pull it anyways to send it to them. You have to pull it right to them. So.
I've, yeah, to send it to the line.
I mean, it just seemed to have to do something. It's just a thought.
Yeah, I, I have to pull the same reports, I'm sure, for Martin.
Yeah. Because that's kind of what the, his response said. So it doesn't look like it would be additional work except from what usually questioning you, except that pull.
My only thought is that he might have more fun getting ahold of them and talking to them than me. Just where I feel like I've kind of hit a dead end. But I, I do know what you're saying. And the ten thousand was him trying to be.
Right.
Yeah. I mean.
But that was just the thought I had.
Not conservative, but not, you know, over the top. He was just trying to be realistic.
You could send, since you have to pull the stuff anyway, just print it off and send it to them with that little form. And then if you don't hear back, then we could go to that. Because you've got time.
Because it'll be paid.
Because it'll be paid. It's paid either way. It's not like they're fighting that someone has to pay it upfront because there's just not an option at this point because of the penalty.
Right.
So. You need to keep all your stuff so it's ready to go on.
Yeah.
Because I could find all the stuff that's in there. I'm hoping so.
Well, and then, I mean, at least.
So they have a good sound.
If you're doing that and you know you can't find stuff, that might be a conversation you could have with the, the attorneys because they might say it's not even like, you don't have the evidence. And then we're, again, not spending ten thousand dollars.
Right.
So, because I mean, it was before your time. So you're going to try to.
One of them was my December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, that was my learning experience. When they told me I needed to certify mail it. She said, too bad. She said, too bad, so sad. And I was.
Which one? Where are you telling?
The last one.
Oh, yeah, that was since I've been here. That was when I told her I mailed it on January fourth and she said, well, it was input in April or May. It sat there that long. And they have no, I have no proof of when I mailed it, other than my date I wrote on it.
Gotcha. I do think that that sounds like a good option to
Yeah.
pay it and have Brittany attempt to do it and then come back to us if it doesn't look like it's going to work.
Would it be worth asking them, okay, if you file, because I'm rereading the sentence from him. We recommend that the district consider paying the past two amounts for twenty twenty-four and then filing the form eight forty-three. So can you file, maybe you can only file that form once would be a question on a claim. Because if you do that, then I might miss your chance for him for that, for him to. Yes. So that's a question. And then, so he says twenty twenty and forward, but we have a charge from nineteen. So he's saying not to pay that forty-one thousand? Because pay the past two months for twenty twenty-four, then filing that form as appropriate after investigation, but the breakdown from the IRS says.
I think he was missing from, when I talked to him on the phone, he did tell me to pay the full amount.
Okay. So that would be twenty nineteen and forward.
Because he said, then that one's one of the three in the most because of the amount. Because it's all percentages.
Yeah. I just think it'd be, my own thought is just, it'd be worth knowing if we have the information to fight it first. If we don't have it.
So maybe the only motion to be made would be to pay it.
Yeah.
And to leave business.
We have the motion to pay the IRS.
So they're like, and figure out if we can do five-one ones or.
Well, do we? We can make a motion to pay it, but do we have to make a motion for Brittany to file that paper and get ahold of the lawyer to fight it? So we don't, she don't need our approval. She just needs us to say pay it. She can do all the behind the scenes. It don't even have to come back to us.
Then you could.
Unless we're going to spend money.
Right.
Well, right. If it is going to go to the attorney and pass that much, then it needs more.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But, and it would be worth, I think, asking them if you can only file that form once.
Right.
Because that would make a big difference. I think it'd be good to know that. So.
Well, and if, and honestly, by the January meeting, we, if, if we need an answer, if we have an answer that says, no, you get one shot at this.
Sure.
Then time isn't going to hurt us in that case.
Yeah, it's, you have to pay it. They're telling you to pay it. So.
It's already big.
You paid the front part of the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it could be.
Yeah.
Try and get. Figure out where it's at eventually.
Yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they pay you back your penalties. It would just be the
Right.
principle.
Right. And that's why we could fight it. That's why it's so important. That's why they're saying you better pay it.
I think it depends on if you can abate them.
You know, you win here, you lose.
Okay.
So when you file this, you can also ask to abate your penalty. So that happened on some of the other ones. Because we had another big one that wasn't quite forty-one. I want to say it was like thirty-seven or thirty-eight. And they did abate those penalties because they found the payment and then took all the penalties and interest off. So you can count on abatement with it.
Okay. Switch to no.
Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board discussion or motion?
I move we pay the IRS.
I'll second.
TB's made the motion to pay IRS and full. Mike has seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? PB's made the motion to pay IRS and full. Mike has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Yeah, I, I, I just.
Okay.
I was going to ask a question, but or discussion, but she's answered the question a lot of the time, but I was just going to ask her again. For the public that's watching about the funds that we have to pay this.
Yes, the funds we have to pay this year in the retirement fund. Another one fourteen. Which is approved by the auditor.
Not coming out, we're going to.
Yes.
To the consent agenda. Ready for discussion?
I'd like to ask you this before the meeting, but I can't help you guys this. Great kind of question this week from another staff member asking about revenues and thought it was confusing that we don't see revenues on the monthly reports. But I want to know from you guys what you want to see because the revenues get a little tricky because of like how taxes and stuff come in. Like there's times it looks like our general funds are way in the hole because we get taxed twice a year. But I can include a different sheet if you guys actually want to see revenues every month. I just don't know if that's going to be confusing or not when if it's easier just to see the budgets and what we've spent. Like transportation, there's not a hundred and sixty thousand in there because we've only received half the money because November taxes just came in. Like, you know, there's not, it, it just looks weird. Same thing with all of your general funds, but I want to make sure you guys were comfortable with this new report that we started using and that is giving you the right information. And same thing with grants, like our grants go in the hole first. Like title, I have to spend the money and then request the money. So I don't want to get confusing like we're in the hole to people that are either. But I also want you guys, if you want to see the revenues.
Do you keep like your own spreadsheet of that?
Yeah. So I file it with Jesse every month.
Yep.
Yep. And then I have, I have my own tracking like for each grant or each fund to make sure all our money comes in.
And I don't think it would hurt to just put it in here.
Okay.
And it's my thought. I mean, that doesn't hurt anything. This is a nicer, this
Just like this flows.
The breakdown flows better.
Yep.
But that way, we're, you know, if somebody wanted to look at it, they could.
Yep. Yep.
So does that go right into this and then it mixes all these numbers up or do you put it separate?
No, I would do it, I would do it separate. Okay. Yep.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. That would, yeah. And then maybe, I don't know if you could put a statement on there, like it's not.
Yep. We're not in the hole. These funds are requests after use or.
Yeah, just something so people don't think.
It's a lot. But.
I'm, I'm fine with this. I think this is nice to have.
Yep.
So it makes sense to me.
I was going to say we have so many people who don't want to read it.
Old letters.
That was my fear. I'm like, okay, so I'm like, oh, this is, they're going to be like, ugh. Like my general fund was sixty thousand and the whole fill this last one.
Could you just put it on the screen at the next meeting and then we could decide? That would be more confusing for future meetings. And we guys take a look at it. Because, I mean.
Yeah. Yes, I said, I don't want to confuse them. If you don't know, it does look horrible.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe that would be.
Try it next month and see what looks. Public comment? Public comment? Board discussion or motion?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Mike has moved to approve the consent agenda. Sam has seconded it. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any other board comment? Mike has moved to approve the consent agenda. Sam has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I was going to say, can you?
Can we take like the smallest break you can possibly take?
I have a question. Is there a great school Christmas program?
Oh, I have not heard of that.
Okay.
Eighteen, that's fine. I just.
K through three.
Make sure.
K through three.
That's all I. First, the, here, let me tell you for sure, I'm going to end the stream.
Yes, please end the stream.
We're going to be test.